Good. We're opening the public care for Cambridge School Weston Loomin Site Plan Approval for Health and Fitness Facility. Betsy, you have some things you want to walk us through on this?
Yeah.
Certificate of Action.
Okay. So you got a draft certificate of action a couple of days ago. I ended up talking with the project manager, Shar Lewis. She and I walked through. She had reviewed them with Cambridge School representatives and some of the engineering people who were reviewing the project. So on page one, section one decision, the part that has changed there slightly is the certificate of title for the land court deed. And that's the language that they want to see. The whole property is land-ported and that's their preferred language. And I'm fine with that. So that's change one.
Okay.
Change two is that we decided to add on page two, number four, all of the plans that were included, including all of the plans that were included in the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. Because Dave Conway reviewed all of those plans, coupled with the fact that the plans that were given to the planning board were technically C1 through C7, but C8 through C12 have a bunch of details that are integral to the project. So we just decided to keep everything.
Okay.
So that's the major change on that page. On page three, D, the stormwater report, there was some updated details there in terms of the original report and then the revised report with subsequent revisions on September 5th. So the bottom of that paragraph. Then in the discussion section...
Just saying, stormwater would be one word in that case?
It depends on what spell checker you have.
Well, what's the report title? It's either one word or water.
I think it's two words.
But water would be capitalized.
Okay.
But usually it's one word.
Can we look that up right now?
That's okay.
So you have all your report called it?
It should relate to what it's titled.
No, that's the name of the report, so I'm okay with that. Okay, so in the discussion, there were minor changes in the discussion section. And I didn't have any problem with, you know, changing of the E2 and A and things like that. So it's, there were some corrections on Ruth Loderol's name. What else was there? There was clarification on page four in that middle paragraph of how the engineering is dealing with the dead-end water main for the new eight-inch water main. So that we don't have stagnant water.
If I could just come to the corrections in that paragraph since that's where you are. The third line from the bottom where it says, "Through the new fire hydrant." That will, the word "B" is missing, "be" located.
Okay.
Thank you.
So minor changes predominantly in that middle paragraph. This section that starts, the fourth full paragraph down that starts with D, Middleton stated, there was an area to the south which is the low point. That paragraph was changed a little bit to specify the Zone A, special flood zone area. Little bit of change to that paragraph.
That sentence, "A lower area was created on school property just south of Plainfield approximately 10 years ago when the school performed regarding the Plainfield." Something's missing there.
The low area is recreated on the school property just south of the Plainfield approximately 10 years ago when the school performed. Wait a minute. I think it was, wait a minute. Oh.
School per...
Hang on. Okay, in the original you have, "When the school did some other work to provide compensatory storage for the Conservation Commission." A flood zone, okay, that's like, if you were to say the proposed building site was located out of the A flood zone. The low area was created approximately 10 years ago when the school did some other work to provide compensatory storage for the Concom. John Fiss said a neighbor had water over their tennis court in the winter. He suspected maybe a culvert got caught. It was noted that the culvert's made wire cleaning out. The school will talk to the DP. Okay, so the paragraph, "The low area," that needs to be revamped a little bit. Just to say that that work was done to provide compensatory storage for the Conservation Commission.
I think I just lay out what you're trying to come up with.
Yeah, I think you... When the school provided compensatory storage to Conservation Commission.
Well, if I delete "When the school performed regarding the Plainfield" to "Approximately 10 years ago to provide compensatory storage," or something to that effect. I'll fix that sentence. Okay.
And it wasn't for the Conservation Commission. It was either required by the Conservation Commission. Or for...
Yeah, that's right.
It's not a plain of the title.
Kind of good, alright.
Also, Betsy, the first complete paragraph on that page, where it says, "One foot candle on the third line."
It says average.
Other than those changes, I don't think there's anything on that page. There was clarification on page six, the paragraph that starts when the school applied to Mass DEP for school flow variance. I had slightly different language in that paragraph and they provided information on the school flow variance and the fact that they can install a tidal flow system versus an outside treatment plan. Again, the bottom paragraph, the second to the bottom paragraph that starts on September 3rd, the, again, the section that deals with the water department and dead-end water line, that is slightly changed from the original I had. So this is basically, I'm just making some assumptions of what is being stated on October 1st. And what I did was I outlined the criteria and then...
Seven points.
Yeah, so from then, the project manager ended up providing some information and I tweaked it. So that goes through seven, eight, nine, and then any other comments that we may have.
Question, Betsy. It's mentioned on page 15 that they will need calculations for earth movement and truck trips. What about earth movement? Do we need a hearing for that or is that the address?
Sorry, which page?
That was on page five, the second to the bottom paragraph. The paragraph that starts with D Conway.
Is it on page five?
Yes.
You said 15 at first.
Oh, I did, sorry.
We were all confused.
Sorry. Page five of 13, fifth line on the paragraph starting with D Conway.
Right, right.
Second at the bottom.
Okay, the, I haven't seen any earth movement calculations.
Probably pretty significant.
The building inspector hasn't made a call on it.
Well, I think we will have to have a earth movement hearing.
Well, so I have a condition, draft condition. You know what, I had a condition that didn't get included in here, which was basically earth movement.
It has a trigger.
Yeah. Right. It was prior to building permits. Wait a minute, let me pull that email.
Doesn't it require a separate hearing?
I had stated that there'll be addition to the conditions. As it relates to blasting, there'll be a standard blasting condition that added to the COA. It will come in under general erosion control and stormwater management sections. We'll read something like the language noted below. During construction, should blasting of ledge be required, the applicant shall notify the planning board. How the company will perform the blasting, prepare a blasting and crushing operations management plan and meet with the planning board to discuss the plan. Prior to any blasting taking place, impacted dividers will have a copy of the blasting schedule notified. Be notified no less than 24 hours in advance of blasting. It's the intent of the blasting and crushing operations management plan to ensure management of dust and mob blasting and rock crushing activities in the event that the earth movement bylaws triggered. By the quantity of materials being opened, the applicant is required to meet the standards of VI 3B of the Weston-Selby Bylaw, which is the earth movement bylaw.
And the building inspector is the one that has to make that determination.
Right, but then I believe we have to have a hearing.
Right.
If there's, if he makes a determination.
Right.
Which it probably will.
Well, that's a lot of... That's the thing, they would be on the plans anyway, but the amount of material that's going to be...
Yeah, but we just discussed that.
We must have a hearing. Because a lot of the material's going to be removed from one side and then it's going to be...
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be a balanced lot.
Right.
They're not moving it far.
I recall, I think it was in the first meeting we discussed that it was going to require some movement.
Right.
So I think...
But not off-site.
And it wasn't very much.
Well, I think there's a lot of movement.
I think there's a lot of movement on that side.
In other words, there is ledge, but how much ledge is still uncertain. And there's technical movement, but if it's balanced side, that's the issue.
Is it balanced?
They were intending to use off-site. They were going to have, they're basically having a crushing operation so that they can use what they can on-site.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So...
You weren't trucking stuff off.
Well, I think they will, they may have.
I actually don't know. I mean, I don't, I can't actually remember the warning that was on that site. I mean, is it, is it okay if it's balanced and just moved around the site?
Isn't earth movement not earth removal?
Perfect movement.
Movement is a thousandths of a...
So even if it's balanced, if you're moving it...
Yeah.
It still needs review.
And so you're hearing that.
We've done separate hearings for...
We're not clear on this, so...
Yeah.
I saw a point of clarification though. So, I mean, I think, and this is maybe a naive question, our plans, we've indicated we are moving ledge, digging in. So you know we're doing that.
Right.
But you just want us to come back when we have more accurate calculations on exactly what we're going to do, the timeframe and the...
Well, there's actually an earth movement bylaw.
Correct.
And it requires a separate hearing, a separate approval.
It has an impact on the neighborhood because it depends on, you know, trucks that are going to be trucked up. That sort of thing, so it's an oversight mechanism.
But, and I understand that, I shouldn't say "but," and, but you, I can't, that would be funny. You know, I mean, our whole plans that you have approved and...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, know that we are going to have to do that.
Yeah, but Steve's point, you know, it's a, there's a, it's a special permit to grant it essentially, but it's a formality.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, it is. Move for movement of earth, to dig, excavate, deposit, fill, grave, replace, level, or otherwise alter or change the location of earth. So the building inspector's the one that makes that call. So as soon as you find out...
Removal is another one.
You go in, you talk with him, say, "This is what we're doing." And then he would make the call as to whether it triggered the removal.
Can you have that as a condition?
Yes, they're going to have it as a condition.
So that, that is a condition that you're adding into this.
Yeah. Blasting also is subject to the part of regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, move, remove. Movement and then there's a perfect removal.
Any other changes that you want to push to make?
Okay, wait a minute, hang on.
Earth removal.
There's earth movement that's specifically for non-residential situations.
Right, yes.
Okay, on page 10, number, conditions prior to issuance of building permits. On number two...
Page 10, number two.
Page 10, number two. Originally, the plan that I had, which was the C1 plan, showed the area to be delineated in orange fencing, you know, construction fencing. And it turns out that that is actually going to be done in phases. So we've included language that says they need to provide a phasing plan for the construction so that we know where the specific limits of work are for a given period of time. So it's going to be evolving. So they're going to be working on one section first, then they're going to be working on another section. So the entire C1 plan will not be a limit of work here. It'll be, it'll be, yeah, it'll be phased.
The orange fencing will be moved around.
Right.
A Halloweenish.
Right, so that paragraph has changed from the original until it's after 10.
And it goes.
Okay, I think we're good on, that was the major change on page 10. On page 11...
Question, about on page 10, why is the commencement of work associated with the construction of the septic system permitted prior to the issuance of a building permit? Is that typically done?
Well, they have to put their, as I recall, they have to put their septic in the back behind the building. So I don't know.
But why is before a building permit?
Wouldn't they need a building permit?
They don't need a building permit to provide a septic system. A septic system.
What would be required of the school?
No work shall occur without the installation of, well, no work.
I don't think I've ever seen wording like that.
All right, well, I'm trying to...
Betsy, is it because of the proximity, excuse me, is it because of the proximity of where our septic is and we want to be able to install the septic in the building, you know, similarly? Because if we, once we get the building there, we can't... I mean, I think we don't want to disturb too much. It's like we have a straight shot back to do the septic.
I'm sure it's a sequencing thing, but the question is, why don't you need to have a building permit in order to do a septic system?
I think because it falls under the Board of Health's scope.
Oh, the answer to that.
You know, you might want to look at the Regis College. Not, you know, not right now, but at the Regis College, they have a septic and septic certificate of action. Oh, I don't know that they were, I'm not sure they were adding a septic system.
Well, they weren't because they're on sewer.
Oh, right. Exactly.
I think this may have been taken from a prior decision.
So I've never seen that on a house either, where you're talking about putting in a septic system before. Well, actually, this would be in the Goddard School.
Yeah, putting...
They have a septic system.
They're putting the septic in before they put the building in.
Did Rivers Yurt need a septic?
No, no. I will double check this. The town of Weston will not issue a building permit for the addition or alteration to any building that will increase sewage flow without first obtaining either the Board of Health approval of existing sewage system applications. Following the Board of Health's reviews of the plan, the applicant will be notified. If approved, the applicant will provide the Board three copies of the plan stamped with the Board of Health approval and will be available to the applicant. The new copy will be filed if the plans are disapproved. The applicant will be notified. Right, blah, blah, blah. Yep. Dispose of works construction permit. I think the reason that we put this in there is that there was, the way the septic system is located, it's behind the building.
Right.
And they're going to have to put, they're going to have to put the bulk of the system in before they start digging for the foundation.
Right.
So Sharie didn't have any problem with the way this is worded.
But it's not her I'm worried about. It's whether you're allowed to do that before you have a building permit. I would just check and make sure that the building permit doesn't need to be issued first or that it's sufficient just to have the health permit issued.
Because that's from 2001.
I don't know, yeah, if we even need that at all.
Well, we certainly need language that says, "No work shall occur on the septic system without the installation of the fencing."
Right.
Okay.
Right, the first part is...
So we could delete the first sentence?
We can delete the first sentence.
Does that work?
Yeah. It doesn't change the rules. It just makes it more...
Well, I just kind of like clarification on that.
Yeah.
Well, I will certainly clarify.
We don't need to have it clarified, yes.
No, but if it turns out that you do have to have a building permit in order to put in a septic system...
Then they'll have to get a building permit before they put in the septic system.
You know what?
Just bring it up, everybody.
Let me clarify it tomorrow with the building inspector and the health agent. And if they need a building permit, I'll put in that they need a building permit before they need the septic. Otherwise, it'll stay the way it is. Okay?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Don't think there were any changes on 11. Dead-end, no, no changes there.
Under D, lighting conditions, all light fixture, dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
And then there's also the, I'm sorry, redundant is that the plans already have an average. What can't we?
Do we not have lumens required?
We don't, we don't have lumens. We have a plan that shows an average of less than one foot candle.
I would repeat that there.
So what do you, what do you want?
That the foot candle is less than, or one or less.
Yeah, will not exceed one foot candle average.
That's it.
On the ground.
I love the word exterior between all and void.
So, as you say, light levels shall not exceed...
Yep.
I don't think there's anything else. I think the rest of it is just standard language.
Should there be anything about requiring that all utilities be underground?
The plans show all the, all the utilities underground. One thing that actually I just thought of, we had a discussion today, an ASBIL plan? I don't think the boards' standard decisions include ASBILs.
There was something about Dave being present for an ASBIL, I thought.
But that's for the infiltration system.
Right, you were saying for...
For the utilities, so that we know where the utilities are, if there's been any, any changes so that if in the event there's a water break or something.
If there's changes, those would be reflected in a revised plan.
They'd be reflected in an ASBIL.
Yeah, I thought that would be redundant.
We've got, we've got design plans now.
Yeah.
And then there might be changes in NASBIL.
Right. So would you have any, are you going to have ASBILs done?
If there's no changes, we don't need ASBILs.
When a project is controlled.
I mean, it's just...
So, for example, so, so right now, the planning board's approving a project that has a certain set of plans. So say somebody's out in the field and... So, say somebody's out in the field and something happens and you make a change.
Yes.
So, I would assume that your engineering group is going to be doing a set of ASBIL plans that shows any changes. So, can we put something in the decision that says that you're going to give us the ASBILs?
Yes.
And the main reason for that is, so, if you have a water break,
Yeah, it's fine.
The first people you're going to come top with is BPW.
That makes total sense.
Okay, so, ASBIL, I'll add a condition there. Probably prior to occupants. And specifically, the concern is utility, underground utilities. So, I'll just, I'll just add it between five and six.
So, what are you adding?
A condition that ASBIL plans be provided.
Including underground utilities?
Yeah. I mean, they have to do things like test the water pressure and stuff like that, so all of that would be done before any paving happened. So, the concern is that we just want to make sure the utilities are where they're supposed to be or if they've changed.
To know where they are.
To know where they are and details of that.
I guess I would ask you just to also compare the conditions in general. I mean, I know the septic doesn't apply to the Regis College, limited site plan review approval that we did last year. It was for the Ma, the Hen, what is it, Maria? Maria Hall dorm addition. I think you've got everything covered.
Oh, my gosh, see this, it's quarter.
Would you like to put that in your question? That part of it?
Well, let me just say, I hope that we approve the certificate of action of the site plan approval for the Cambridge School of Weston, Health and Fitness Center with the modifications and additions discussed and noted.
Second. Want to pay you?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we'll see you for work. Thank you very much.
Night, thank you.
Thanks again.
You too. We're doing it outside.
Oh, yeah, and we're, but we're not going to do it in the other.
Okay, we have a couple of issues regarding, and it's fencing, lighting, and some details.
Hello.
Hi.
We're very tired.
I think we're going to be quick and easy in it.
We hope.
Uh-oh.
That's always a kiss of death.
No, no.
No, it's a little bit.
So.
Okay, so, pass that down. These good colors.